Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Burke County Board of Commissioners regular meeting for Monday, March 17th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. Madam Clerk, I'll note that all Commissioners are present, along with Manager, Finance Officer, and our county attorney. I would remind everyone to please silence your mobile devices. If you've got telephones and other things that are going to make a racket, if you would please take care of that right now and put those on silent mode. Those speakers who will be coming tonight to the front lectern, please be sure to turn on the microphone button on the right. Red light will come on. That way, we'll be sure to get a good YouTube recording for our folks to see now and in the future. I want to extend condolences tonight to fellow Commissioner, Mr. Burns and his family and the loss of his uncle Tex Burns. Mr. Burns, as perhaps many of you know in this room, has been a stoic member of the community down in the eastern end of our county. Texas Fish Camp is named, I'm sure, after Mr. Burns. And so we do extend our condolences, Randy, to you and your family. All right, this time I'll ask for our invocation Pastor, co-Pastor Matt Matthews with Walden St. Presbyterian Church to come and lead us in our invocation. And following the invocation, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. And we are delighted tonight to have the Boy Scouts of America Troop 197 from Glen Alpine. So guys, really glad to have you all with us tonight. Appreciate you being here. Pastor, if you'll lead us in our invocation, let's stand together.
Let's pray together. Holy God, for the bounty of this day, we give you thanks, and for the blessings of it, for the work before us, and for the people here to do this work. Bless us this night. Grant us the courage to speak up and the courage to hold our tongues and open our ears and our hearts, guide our steps, great God. You have blessed us to be a blessing, now use us. We ask it in your holy name. The people of God together say, amen. Thank you.
Thank you Pastor. Guys, if you'll come on up front. We'll follow your leadership whenever you're ready.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if you guys will turn and stand right here for just a second, we're going to come down and get a picture with you, okay?
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to item number four of our agenda tonight, approval of the agenda. And gentlemen, I'll make note, we do have one addition tonight, decision item number six, resolution authorizing litigation and settlement. So with that addition, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the agenda be approved with the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. All those in favor signify with a lift of hand. Five to zero, Madam Clerk. Have no minutes to approve tonight. It moves us to item number six, presentations. Have several presentations tonight, first one coming from our county manager, Disaster Recovery Update. And we recognize Mr. Epple at this time. Evening, Mr. Epple.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for this brief moment to give an update and a briefing to the board on our disaster recovery efforts. As a reminder, this was originally presented at pre-agenda, and we were seeking guidance at a staff level about the next step in our recovery efforts, which was specific to private property debris removal and waterway debris collection, and trying to navigate really how the board wanted to proceed with moving into that next step. I want to give you an update there, but we also have some more relevant data, so I'm going to still walk back through this presentation. As a reminder, I think it's a good, there's new things happening every day. We're getting further in the process, new challenges are being conquered. And so I always would be remiss if I didn't start by saying how indebted we are as staff to the board for your leadership and support. The last six months have been a real challenge, a real test of our organization, of our stewardship. Certainly, I've been very proud to serve alongside of each of our, my fellow colleagues here at the county, our public safety teams, as we worked through our initial emergency response plan, which was clearly all about life-saving in day one and day two. And if we all remember, it seems like a long time ago, but at the same time, it seems like yesterday, when we had no communication, and we couldn't get in touch with family, and we didn't have basic infrastructure like power and water. And those were trying times. And so I don't want to forget the efforts of our special operations teams, 75-plus with water rescues, the Sheriff's Department, 330-plus welfare checks, the tireless effort of people in the Public Health Department, Social Services, set up emergency shelters, delivering needed medications and oxygen, and all the things that our folks needed here in the community. All of the sister agencies that worked in the utility departments and all those type of things. It's easy to just take a minute and pause and reflect on the countless hours that folks put into trying to stabilize in the days and moments after the storm. Really about day nine or day 10, we started to transition to this more long-term recovery, which we utilized a donation center, saw about 7,000 people in a nine or 10-day period. And since then, there's just been next chapter after next chapter of things that we were required to do to try to be a leader in really the Burke County collective and comprehensive recovery. Over the last, we're tick over, I think today's day 171. And here's just some takeaway, both in the region, as well as here in Burke County. And you can just see the enormity of across all of the efforts to recover. Drilled down more specifically on Burke County, one of the things that I think was a big deal for our community is the fact that we were able to, largely due to the Board of Commissioners, we were not originally selected as a county to have a disaster recovery center. If you'll recall, that was about a 45-day segment there at the Foothills Higher Education Center, where anyone that needed help with a, excuse me, an individual assistance application, maybe they had been denied, maybe the appeals process was complicated. But when you look up at the number, you know, 13,000-plus folks that applied for individual assistance through FEMA in Burke County, a tremendous amount of those folks, roughly 3,500, needed a little bit of extra help. And so on top of donations and volunteer systems, I was really, really proud of our team for helping initiate this disaster recovery center and the volume and the attention that it warranted, and the number of folks that it helped. When you look at the housing assistance component, we had about 7,700 people registered for housing assistance. As you can see there at the bottom, 24 folks owned a home that was destroyed, another roughly 18 folks were renters of a home that was destroyed. We had our update last Friday, there's still nine families in hotels, the Burke County folks. At one time, that was over 200. So, you know, we've been able to help folks relocate. There's multiple temporary housing units. This board approved temporary housing policy, so we have folks now that are living maybe in an RV or a camper. FEMA has deployed some of their trailers. So, you know, that's helped get folks back to their homes, to their property, and I think that's important. Just quickly on the biggest component of long-term disaster recovery that the county has helped lead has been debris removal. And debris removal really falls into multiple categories. The right-of-way debris removal was the biggest component, and we partnered with Debris Tech and SDR to do the monitoring and the collection here in Burke County. We've used four alternative debris sites. So what that means is, these are FEMA permitted, there's a pretty extensive application that has to be processed and approved. And anything that's picked up from the right-of-way, whether it be construction demolition, vegetation, or white goods, that ultimately is going to be something that's part of the county's public assistance application process for FEMA, has to go through one of these permitted sites. You're familiar with, when we first started, we had a three-and-a-half acre site at the landfill that was the only thing that had been pre-approved and permitted. And we knew within 24 hours that that was not going to be enough space, so we immediately permitted an additional site at the landfill. And since then, we've tried to use two others, with 211 East Fleming being our most recent. And honestly, that's been a really important component. We've tried to manage this debris collection with as much efficiency and proficiency as we possibly could. One of the reasons, and we'll talk about this later, the federal administration granted 180-day grace period where there were no costs to be absorbed by the local county. And so we've had a very intentional target since we began this of getting a contractor mobilized in Burke County and collecting that as quickly as possible, so that we, at the county level, did not incur cost. The reason 211 East Fleming was such a critical, such a critical part is during the most winter months, December and January, where you have extensive rains and the ground is soft, just having an impervious surface that we could continue to operate was critical. So we're grateful for all of these partners, but our most recent one really helped us hit our deadlines. As of today, we have about 20 trucks running today. We've collected about 270,000 cubic yards. That was as of about an hour ago. Been really, really proud of our team. You can see here, these dots are areas that have been the highest volume. We've tried to mark those. As we move through, we utilize this debris collection hotline, which is a phone number that people can call and give us their address. That's what populates this map. We've also had a QR code. We had about 381 addresses registered, so we began that in late February, mid-February, late February, and we had about 381 addresses registered. We're working through completing that list, and it's a fairly detailed list. The majority of what is remaining are in these, are in gated communities. So for example, we had a heavy emphasis on several of the gated communities up around the lake today. Access to private property is a little bit more of a challenge. We have to get right-of-entry approvals and have signed contracts with the homeowners' Association or the property owners' association before the contractors can enter their community. And so those have been staged for kind of the last process. So we're in that, what we think is 95th percentile, but we still, obviously, the debris is more, is more spread out, so it takes, the commute time is longer, you're not getting quite the economies of scale and the density that we did earlier, but we feel like we're making good progress. We are trying to pro forma and get a reasonable estimate on probably a small contract extension. The contract with SDR and Debris Tech expires on March 25th, so there will likely need to be some level of an extension. Two things really drive that extension. One is the addresses that have been called into the hotline that still need to be collected. We're going to make sure that we get all of those. So if folks got their address registered by the deadline, we're coming. And trying to pro forma the amount of days that that will require. So for example, if we're able to hit 15 or 20 addresses per day, we can reasonably pro forma the number of days required to collect that. Then we have the reduction of the material, the chipping, the grinding. We can do about 3,500 cubic yards per day, so that gives us some idea of how many days to pro forma on when that will be, you know, fully complete and then disposed of at the landfill. So working on that will likely bring something back to the board, but the original contract does expire on 25th, and so we'll be looking for some short-term contract extension, which is happening all across the 24-county region. Some folks are going out as far as June. I don't think ours will be anything like that. I'm imagining a couple of weeks, but we're working on that and we'll follow up with the board. I'll transition to one of the other chapters that is being managed actively, and this is the Home Mitigation Block Grant. We have 18 properties in Burke County that have filed application. 15 of those 18 come from three neighborhoods, so there's high density in these areas that were more impacted by flood. I think all but two are pursuing acquisition, two are applying for lifting of their home, where they actually come in and take the home off the foundation, raise that elevation, and put it back in a more, in a more proper way that's less prone to future flooding. But as a reminder, the Home Mitigation Block Grant is a process that the State Department of Emergency Management can take, has an intake application process. If you're in the 100-year or the 1% flood plane and you made the qualifications, they give you several options, and your home was substantially damaged. They give you several options, one being, and I think the most common, is acquisition, where they buy your property at pre-storm market value. That does require an approval at the aggregate level by Board of Commissioners, because that property will be taken off the tax rolls in perpetuity forever. But they can also give you repair dollars in certain limited search situations, and also what I mentioned, which is this elevation effort, where you literally raise your house to make it less at-risk or flooding. That's just an example of what that looked like, because that's a pretty unique process. The other thing that we know that we've been working on is on January the 2nd, we sent out from our tax department, as we always do annually, personal property tax forms and listing forms. This year, what was a little bit different because of the storm, we also sent registration applications for folks whose property may have been damaged by the storm and not repaired by January 1st. So for example, maybe a tree fell on your home, maybe you had flooding, but it wasn't to the extent that home mitigation was the right option, but you think that your property value has been impacted or impaired in some way. We wanted to make sure that we gave every taxpayer the opportunity to record that and for us to evaluate it. There was a tick over 400 applications that came back. We've been able to work through just about all of those in-house in the department, informally with the taxpayers. And I think we should be in line to complete that first, probably first week in April, have them all completed and reviewed. There'll be a couple that may go on to the next level of appeal and ultimately to the Board of VNR, but generally, the vast, vast majority of them, we've been able to arrive at a reasonable adjusted value based on percentage of completion method. So similar from in prior years, absent of the storm, if a home had caught on fire, for example, there's still structure left. We use the valuation methodology similar for that. This was our original preliminary damage assessment report that is largely proven to be accurate. So in the, literally in the hours following the storm, we had tax assessors, building inspectors, environmental health agents. We had, I mean, I think that there was about 15 or 16 county employees that deployed from the 911 Center, our acting EOC, to begin to put together this preliminary damage assessment report. And this was so critical to both FEMA's public assistance and individual assistance process, but it also helped us with our tax value impairment evaluation. And largely, most of our, most of the informals that came back aligned with this map, and that really helped set us up. And generally, I think what we're expecting right now is about $5 to $6 million of residential impairment, and somewhere between $20 to $25 million of commercial tax value impairment. Most of what I've presented to this point has been impacted individual families and has been more focused on the person. Burke County government has also been working through an extensive public assistance review process, and I'll tell you, there's a manual that's called the Papa G, it's the Public Assistance Manual. You can Google it, I think they're on version five. It's about 500 pages, and prior to September, most of us had never heard of that. And it has now become a living doctrine that we read and use every single day, and it talks about the documentation that's required, the forms that are required to pursue this reimbursement process. There are multiple, multiple categories. Burke County will ultimately qualify, I think, for five. Billing is about 45 days behind, so these numbers are not quite up to date. But, you know, when you take a snapshot, we were a tick over $5.1 million. I think that probably grows by another 15 or 20% before it's all done, given the amount of debris that we still have outstanding in the reduction. And that's why it's so critical to make sure that our documentation is in line and that we're capturing and recording those calls, because they literally, it's an ongoing audit process, and it is more detailed and intense than how I even know how to describe it to you. But it is not just, we used a generator, it is the brand of the generator, what's the serial number, what type of gas did you put in it, and how many hours did you run? And that is the truth. It's that level of detail. So I'm incredibly appreciative of our staff. Our incident management team continues to meet multiple times a week and work on this from an administrative perspective. I think that we've positioned Burke County to be in a good spot. And again, our sole goal and focus has been to prevent any financial outflow to the extent we can within this 180-day window. And to this point, I think we've accomplished that. What we were talking about two weeks ago, as far as emerging issues, and remember, this presentation was originally directed so the board could give direction on waterway and private property debris removal. As it relates to waterway, we have a lot of blue line streams in Burke County, and that is the next phase of our long-term disaster recovery efforts. And we know that streams that have debris in it raise the risk for future flooding, and it creates a lot of public infrastructure harm if those things were to come loose, and then damage bridges and communication towers and roads and those type of things. So really, there were two options for us as we moved into that next realm. And as an example, we did hire a private drone pilot to fly just the Catawba River, which we estimated to be about a little under $900,000 based on the debris they saw. Generally, that's calculated by going to areas of public infrastructure risk and going 1,000 feet upstream and 1,000 feet downstream, and monitoring and calculating the amount of debris. It's very expensive, because you're not only removing it from the waterway, but once it's removed from the waterway, you have to collect it from a right-of-way collection. So it's kind of a two-legged cost center. But ultimately, it also made sense to us to try to pair that with this, what I think is the final phase of private property debris removal, which is where you actually go on to private property, and whether it's structures that are damaged or trees that are still down. Largely, this is the final cleanup effort for material that may be remaining on private property. And the reason it pairs well with waterway is for right-of-entry. Most of the entry points into the waterways require crossing private property and agreements with landowners. And so there were really two options for the board to consider. I think we talked about in depth the pros and cons of each one. From a private contractor, which is what we've done for the right-of-way debris, there's likely a little quicker mobilization, there's certainly more control and influence on where and how the contractors may work, but there's also a cost share and the risk there, as well as, I can't underscore the administrative management cost of all the moving parts of, again, these agreements and all those type of things. Option two, which is ultimately where the board gave direction, was to seek a partnership with the United States Army Corps of Engineers. Certainly, they have, they are the industry expert and permitting agency for navigable waterways, so they're somewhere that they have a tremendous amount of experience. The chairman and the vice chairman and myself and our incident management team met with a, an officer from the Joint Field Office on February 10th, his name is Mark Caldwell, and he explained the process of them mobilizing here and felt confident about their ability to meet the needs of Burke County with our waterways. Again, the pros and the cons are that there's no financial exposure, it's turnkey operation. We request a mission through the State Department of Emergency Management, and then they deploy to Burke County and get to work. That direction was given from the board on the 3rd of March, the following day, at 14:00 in the afternoon. We put that request in and explained the need. We have gotten a little bit of communication from, through the state since that point. It took them several days, the request through what's called Web EOC, which is the State Department of Emergency Management Mission Request Center, it's an online portal, had us in process, and we've learned since then that they were looking, that there's been a new date put in place, any request made after the 28th of February has to be individually reviewed and approved. So we've sent a follow-up letter to Director Will Ray, who's the State Emergency Management Director, Joe Stanton, who's the Deputy Emergency Management Director, at their request advocating for Burke County. I point out that there was no, preliminarily, there was no, there's no deadline, and I feel confident that that's, some of it's going to be approved. But they did change the process a little bit, other than just requesting it through Web EOC, which is why I don't believe we've got a full deployment date yet. But we'll be tracking that every single day. I emailed them and spoke to both of them, emailed them today, spoke to both of them on the phone Friday, and we're looking forward to figuring out when they are going to have mission assignment for Burke County. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and I appreciate, again, the support and the time of the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, for that review. Any questions for Brian on this item?
I've got a question. Mr. Chairman, Brian, thank you for everything you guys are doing. This cleanup thing with the Army Corps of Engineers and stuff like that, are we working with the whole state on the whole Catawba River system doing this? Is it being, you know, because they got the water transfer coming up and all those things? It just seems like to me now's the time for us to get all this right down the Catawba River, you know, just in Burke County. I mean, is that working like that with them, or is it just specifically us?
So obviously, the Catawba River expands multiple counties. Our request would be for navigable waterways inside of Burke County. And again, when we partner with the Army Corps, they're not going to ask us where to start, how much to do, is this approved or not approved? They're largely a turnkey operation, so it's hard for me to speak to exactly how they deploy and operate. But I can tell you, the same rules that apply to a private contractor apply to them, so what I would expect them to do is largely just go to areas of public infrastructure that's primarily bridges, but that could also be water, you know, water intake for municipal systems. They go up the stream 1,000 feet, down the stream 1,000 feet, and anything that's not organic to that waterway, they remove and clean up. I don't know internally if they communicate and coordinate, as the Army Corps may be working in multiple other counties, they certainly are. Caldwell, for example, and McDowell, they're working both of those places. Henderson, I think, Mitchell, several. So whether they're using similar command staff and coordinating there, I'm not 100% sure. I understand how you could say that there's a 24-county regional impact, and those waterways largely cross boundaries and start at the high country and go all the way to the coast, so it makes sense that we would have more of a regional approach. But at least as far as our involvement, our influence, our knowledge, we've made a request for waterway debris collection and cleanup in Burke County, which would be county border-to-border, and it would largely be waterways that they determined and areas that they determined. That answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Manager, so the debris cleanup, I understand that, and I applaud you guys for crossing all those Ts and dotting all those Is in hopes of getting, well, to get the reimbursement from the federal government. My question is more towards the construction waste. I know we're not grinding that and then burning it, are we?
No, we are handling that in our construction demolition landfill.
Okay, so is there any consideration to longevity of that cell? I mean, has it moved it forward? Is there some reimbursement that might be available for?
Yet the capacity utilization is part of the reimbursement process.
It is, okay.
But it has consumed capacity, there's no doubt about that.
Other questions? All right, hearing none, I entertain a motion to accept this report as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to accept the report.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. All those in favor, say with a lift of hand. Five to zero, Madam Clerk. This brings us to item number two tonight, donation from Morganton High School Wildcat Alumni Association. And we are delighted to have a number of folks with us tonight, but Mr. Patton, Robert Patton, will be presenting this check, and he's going to make some comments, and then we want to take a picture, too. And so, Mr. Patton?
I would like to invite our other representatives and other board collectors to come up with me, Will. First, I want to thank all of you, Chairman, Commissioners, and Mr. Epple, for all you've done to expedite the work that has been done in Burke County to clean up all the remnants of Helleni. It's been remarkable, the work that's been done. I know that you are the leaders, and I know that the reality is that our employees and the contract employees are the ones that are out there with the shovels and the back hose and doing the work, but we really appreciate it, and that's our goal tonight, just to be here to tell you thank you. thank you. Our check is for $500. It's relatively small in the size of the scale of Helene, but we just wanted to let you know we appreciate what you do and how well you've gotten it done. I want to quickly introduce the people behind me. Donnie Williams, all these Morgan High School graduates, by the way. If I forget one of their names, not because I don't know them well. L.H. Curtsey, Judy Franklin Pearson, Susan McCracken, and Shirley Dale. And these are all Morgan High School graduates. On November 22nd, 2018, a cold, icy morning, we met for the first time in the basement of the new renovated community house, informed this organization, Morgan High School Wildcat Alumni Association. And our goal is to create some kind of permanent location on the Morgan High School property that recognizes and memorializes the fact that that school was there from 1927 to 1973. So we appreciate you, and we thank you for all your hard work.
All right, thank you very much. And this presentation couldn't have came at a better time, following our manager's report on the devastation of Helene. And we have in our audience tonight a numbers of county employees. And I'm going to ask you guys that really are doing all this work, all of our county employees, if you don't mind, please come up and stand in front of their platform here and get with these guys so we can make a picture of the folks that really have made all this possible. And the manager alluded to that during his report, but don't be bashful, guys. Come on up here. We know that you're county folks. Come on up right here where we can get a good picture.
And I'm going to take a second to say a very, very special thanks to all of you for all that you've done for the past, how many days, 170 days? 171 days. Thank you. I appreciate you very, very, very much. The check is in two parts, by the way. This is one part everybody can see, but the one that goes in the bag is back here.
Well, you didn't show me that earlier.
I think we're going to have to scooch you in.
Y'all need to come up here. Ladies in the midst, you're in charge.
I'm long. I can't get you. You've got to come on up. Almost, I can't.
Come on up, guys. Come on up. She's not going to stop till you get her right. I'm here to tell you. Come on up.
Look, I got to finish here. We got to get good. All right. I can just barely get you. Well, that's most everybody. Cheers. Don't tell the workers, Tom, people.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. With that, ladies and gentlemen, now entertain a motion to accept the $500 donation from the Morganton High School Wildcat Alumni Association as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the check from the Morganton High School Alumni Association, and very proud to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. All those in favor, say goodbye, the up fifty in hand. Five to zero, Madam Clerk. That brings us to item number three, presentation. This item comes from our EMS director, James Robinson, recognition of lifesavers. James, good evening.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you. Obviously, we brought a roomful of families here because it's not just about what we do every single day. It's the recognition that the families actually get to take back and be appreciative of the amount of time, effort, and energy that their family members spend away from them. So that's really important to us. Obviously, we want to make sure that we demonstrate for you, as the commissioner, for the citizens of Burke County, that we do have value and that the commitment that we have is seen in the performance, and we meet all five of these areas, I feel, tonight. We want to make sure that we're recognizing what we do for our community, the economic growth, because without individual emergency services, it would be very difficult for us. Obviously, we're a big part of our public safety facet. We're fiscally responsible for the individuals that we bring out here, and by recognizing them, it definitely improves us as an employer of choice. So Burke County Emergency Services operates four shifts on a 24/72 schedule. They have a captain, a lieutenant, and a sergeant that are managing each one of these shifts, and then three to four training officers that are on there making sure that the education is up to date. It's a very, very, very busy schedule. Some important facts that I think are for each of us to recognize and understand. You know, sudden cardiac events, a thousand of them happen every single day across all ages, and most of those events are out of hospital. So that makes a difference because you don't have all the staff at the hospital. Early recognition of these events and the activation of the 911 system is what makes a difference. Only 7% of these individuals are going to survive a cardiac event that EMS have treated them for, and 7% of them have full recovery. That means no deficits or nothing that is going to be long-term detrimental to them. What makes that difference is that activation of the 911 system. And I think it's important to recognize that North Carolina is one of the highest in the nation, 42.9% activation with bystander CPR. These individuals that you see in the gray shirts go out and teach hands-only CPR in communities, at churches, college events, fire department events across this county, and they do it because they know that it makes the absolute difference for each and every one of the individuals. So tonight, first, we're going to recognize some CPR and what we call ROSC, return of spontaneous circulation saves. So there's going to be three different events that I'm going to talk about here, and then we're going to bring all the individuals up. Commissioner Burns, if you will also come up and meet with Deputy Director Hood. I do have recognitions here, and I'll be naming some Morganton Department of Public Safety, as well as some Sheriff's Department members. All of those were busy this evening, either in training or in response mode, so it's going to be a little bit difficult for those individuals to be here. So the first event I'd like to discuss is on 12/6/2024 in Rose's Shopping Center. A couple were in there, they were shopping, and the gentleman, the husband, suddenly collapsed in the middle of the store. A bystander that we never caught the name of, who was a nurse here at a facility, that was the most that we ever learned about her, started instant CPR because she recognized that the gentleman was in cardiac arrest. Upon the arrival of our crews, the gentleman did have a return of spontaneous circulation, and he was extremely confused of the whole entire event. Upon further review, and we'll talk about STEMI coordination here at the very end of our presentation, our crew identified that he was having a heart attack, actively having a heart attack, and he survived a cardiac arrest because of quick CPR. He was transported to Fry. Fry was able to place a stent in that, and he was able to completely recover. On 1/28/2025, a cardiac arrest at home. A female patient, upon arrival of our crew, she was going to go to the hospital on her own, but when she got in the car, she went into cardiac arrest. Family members started CPR, and upon arrival of EMS personnel, we continued CPR, and we were able to get ROSC for this individual. The same on 2/5/2025, a male patient with unknown problem. Morganton Department of Public Safety arrived on scene first, they initiated CPR, and this individual, we were able to obtain ROSC. Now, one thing of importance, for us to identify it as a life-saving event, that individual has to live 48 hours past their cardiac arrest. As I mentioned, 7% of these individuals will have no negative effects. Out of these three, one of those was 100% successful with no long-term effects. The other two individuals, we were able to provide family with the opportunity to have closure. And sometimes, that means as much as anything for some of these families. So I'd like to recognize, from the 12/6/2025 call, unfortunately, we don't know who the bystander is, but I would like to give her recognition for her efforts in doing CPR and saving a life. First responders on the scene was Chief Wes Taylor from the rescue squad. Morganton Department of Public Safety officers Brad Buchanan, Mike Ziegler, Justin Dale, and Stacy Huffman were on scene. And from EMS response, Cam Harden, James Deal, and we had a student that was working that day, Stephanie Smith, as well as Lieutenant Zach Williams. You guys will come to the front, please. From the 1/28/2025 cardiac arrests, we had a response from Lake James Fire Department, and many of our responses, as you will tell, are coordinated with first responders here in our county. We could not do it without the volunteers that respond. Ashley Lane, Debbie Taylor, and Deputy Director Hood did not print his own certificate off, but I want to make sure that we recognize him for his response as well. And on 2/5/2025, Morganton Department of Public Safety officers Zach Carlton, Jake Townsend, Janelle Von Barker, Tyler Holland, and Joey Ballanger all responded. And first responders Wes Taylor and Nick Massey. Captain Scott Brausecker, Adam Rawls, who cannot be with us this evening because of a sick child, and Madison Hodges. I want to point out that most of these individuals that you see standing before you this evening are on shift or are ready to respond at a moment's notice for any call that comes out. So I do want to recognize their sacrifice away from family, again, to be here and their response mode. We'll figure out the rest of the certificates here in just a minute, but I do want to give a round of applause for our CPR. And I will ask our CPR saves to stand to the side because I'll get a big picture at the very end. Our next recognition is a fun one. There was an article that was put in the paper a few months ago talking about the fact that Burke County Emergency Services delivered five babies right after the storm, and that was a big oddity. The fact of the matter is, statistical average, only 1% of our calls actually develop into a full delivery in the out-of-hospital setting. Most of the time, we transport mom and baby, they get to the hospital, then they have a delivery, everything is normal. So it's only really about 7% of the calls that are actually prehospital or births that happen in the field. So upon arrival, our crew found, in the final stages of childbirth, a mom giving birth of a child in a downstairs. This is a unique situation, to say the least, and the crew instantly knew what they had to do. They split to divide and conquer. They now had a mom that needed to be cared for, and they had a baby that needed to be cared for. The QRV was en route as well to be able to assess them, and unfortunately, both EMS providers were unable to be here this evening, but Adam Rawls and Heaven Hanning were on the EMS crew, and first responder Wes Taylor showed up from the rescue squad to assist and ended up driving the crew in. So congratulations and thank you, Wes, for your response. Right there on the corner, John. Last but not least, sometimes we take for granted that we don't really know what it is that we're put in one particular place to do, or what the timing actually looks like. I'm really pleased with this evening because I've watched this young man develop into the young man that he is now. I actually was fortunate enough that I taught his EMT class when he was going through, and I've seen him make several life and career changes as he has gone. So on February 15th, 2025, Kamani was driving down the road after working his shift on Crew 50. He just happened to be in the right place at the right time. He came across the vehicle right out here in the intersection that was parked with the door open, the four-way flashers on, and a gentleman unconscious behind the driver's seat. Not knowing what was going on, Kamani instantly performed an assessment, activated the 911 system, and then upon the arrival of the EMS crew, provided additional care for that patient. The patient was ultimately transported to UNC Blue Ridge, where he received follow-up care and made a 100% recovery. Commissioner Burns, would you like to speak a little on this?
So there were a lot of circumstances that just kind of happened that night. I happened to be in the ATM line behind this gentleman that night, and I watched him get in and out of his vehicle. He didn't park close enough to get there, and I just kind of patiently waited for him to make his transaction. It was raining that night. And when he finally drove away, I pulled up, and the ATM machine was saying, would you like to continue your transaction? And I thought, that's odd, I've never seen that before. So I hit no, and as soon as I hit no, it spit his debit card out. Well, I made a few calls, searched around, and I finally got the gentleman's address. I drove to his house two days in a row to try to get him his debit card. I left a card with one of his neighbors. And it was Sunday, we were on our way back from an event in Raleigh, County Commission event, and I got a call at like 9:30 that night. And the guy introduced himself, and he said, I understand you have my debit card. And I'm like, wow, it's been days. I mean, it was President's Day on Monday, the bank was closed, I had tried to turn it over to them at that time. And, I mean, it's the grace of God that I was 15 minutes away from bringing the county vehicle back to leave it, and he just happened to be at the bank looking at the ATM machine. And he met me across the street there at our Avery Building, and I said, I didn't get a good look at you, I'm going to have to ask for an identification before I can give this to you. And he pulled my business card out of his pocket, and I thought, that'll work. And it was only then that he and I sat there for probably the next 15 minutes, him telling me his story about what had happened to him when he left. And from his own words, if that person had not stopped, he don't know what would have happened. And I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart for taking care of our citizens, and having the wherewithal to notice that something was wrong and to pull over and stop, and I appreciate that very much.
Makes me very proud of it. We'd like to recognize Kamani. Kamani, thank you for doing the right thing. When others would drive by, you stopped, and you make a difference. Last but not least, I do want to take a moment to recognize that a lot of our cardiac care, our STEMI recognition, there is hours, countless hours of training that goes in. Our training sergeants, Lieutenant Zach Williams, will also tell you that we spend countless hours going back over cardiac care, recognition of STEMI, how to care for individuals as it goes on. And tonight, we've also asked Ms. April Traxler, who works with Fry, who's our STEMI coordinator, to speak on our behalf to the operations that we do here in Burke County, and I was very proud that we were actually recognized in one of their recent events for the care that we actually provide.
Thank you, guys, for allowing me to be here. I've actually worked with Burke County EMS dealing with our STEMI patients, and those are our patients who, by EKG and clinical symptom, we know they're having a heart attack. When we started this back in 2005, we never realized across the state of North Carolina what we were bringing to the table, but we are actually impacting the lives of our people in our community. And when we held the first meeting, we had it at a big hotel in Hickory, and for two days, we taught on how you recognize a STEMI and how you can implement processes on the street to take care of these patients. And I will say, Burke County took it by the bull because even at that time, we did not even have 12-lead EKG machines on every ambulance. We have now come full circle to where we have EKG machines. Even some of your fire departments have their own 12-lead EKG Even some of your fire departments have their own 12 lead EKG machines, and they know how to apply it. So when your team's coming in the door, they push a button and they're already seeing what's going on with their patient. And so the teamwork that goes on is pretty much second to none. The state of North Carolina took those efforts, and this is actually what is United Stateswide now called the Mission Lifeline Program. And because of the grassroots efforts that were put into place within North Carolina between EMS agencies and hospitals, and I'm here to represent Frye, but I'm going to tell you, you've got two great hospitals within your own county, and we all work together when it's cardiac, and we can give these patients their best chance of survival. But these people right here on the front line, and I can't go on without saying your 911 dispatchers, your first responders, and even your community members that have gone the extra mile to put AEDs in their businesses, in their church houses. This is what saves lives. And I stand here like a proud mama because I see all these people, and they bring patients to us. One of the things that Burke County alone started, nobody else in the state did, was when they recognized in the field somebody was having a STEMI, they used to call my hospital, which would take them away from the patient. They now alert 911 dispatch, and 911 dispatch is calling me and my teams to come in. And I will tell you, over half of our patients never stop in the emergency department. There is a study that says if you can diminish or keep your ED stops under 20 minutes, you increase their chance of survival, not just in that event, but long-term after the heart attack. So by me being here today, I want you to understand that you really have got your return on investment. When you've approved budgets for these EMS agencies, they're not willy-nilly asking for piddly things. When they ask for the autopulse to do CPR on people or a Lucas device, and they need those dollars, the Lucas device is not the end-all, be-all, but I'm going to tell you, if you're that family and your family member has died, sometimes that Lucas device gets return of circulation, and it doesn't tire out your people, and they can be ready that once we get circulation back, we're in the truck and transporting, we're giving families closure, like James said. That means a lot to a family. So yes, we save people every day, but we bring families closer. And so I want to say thank you to you, but I want to say thank you to these guys because I can tell you as the little girl of a daddy who was a fireman and a first responder for many years, they leave lots of our events. So thank you, guys, for what you do. And go back and tell your families how much you love them, because I'm going to tell you, that little girl that you leave at the middle of a birthday party, she loves it when her mama or her daddy comes back home every time. So thank you for what you do.
I'd like you to everybody to come up to the front, please.
I may be a little biased, but I happen to believe we've got the best emergency medical
Picture for the commissioners.
services in the state of North Carolina, probably in the United States of America. And we're just real proud of all that you guys do for us every day and night. Scheduled public hearings, we have none tonight. This will bring us to our item number eight in Form of Public Comments. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody to speak tonight?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have a couple folks. Sherry McGimsey.
Good evening, Sherry. If you'll just share with us when you get ready.
Hi, I'm Sherry McGimsey, and I want to provide you with a little update on the status of our new PSR program, Brighter House. In 2022, with the help of Hugh Blackwell, Warren Daniels, Johnny Carswell, Scott Mulley, initial funding was provided by grants and many loving donations from friends and conservative citizens. Why Brighter House Matters. There is no stigma to having mental illness, not getting the care and the support is the issue. Having a mental illness is not a crime. That's my only bumper sticker. And Kay has a little bitty video that I'm always asked to go to the CIT trainings as a mother because I love someone with schizophrenia. In search of resources for our son, I found the Clubhouse model, the PSR program, and immediately wanted to visit the original Fountain House Clubhouse in New York City. The Clubhouse model evolved from the original Fountain House over 77 years ago. We learned that the Regional Training Center for accreditation in a Clubhouse model was closed by a Gateway Center in Greenville, South Carolina. Returning home, I had several local committee advocates that experienced, had experience in mental health services if they would visit the Gateway Center with us. David Verlison, at that time with BUCM, and Carol Urban at Grace Hospital Mental Health Ward Nurse agreed to travel with us to experience the Clubhouse model. We needed to know if they saw what we had experienced at the original Clubhouse in New York City. During our trip, we were enthusiastic about bringing the Clubhouse model to Burke County. We discovered several other Clubhouses in North Carolina and made visits to Adventure House in Shelby, Club Nova in Carrboro, Threshold Clubhouse in Durham. Each was unique. Adventure House was the first Clubhouse established in a rural area, and that's international. That was international. And Club Nova was located right downtown in Carrboro, and with the help of their city and county, they were embarking on building, on a building campaign to construct a brand-new Clubhouse right downtown Carrboro, which is now completed, and it is awesome. Threshold obtained a building from a closed church daycare program. They all shared one important element. Each one operates as a freestanding independent nonprofit facility. Brighter House is now a freestanding independent model, and we wanted, that we wanted for Burke County. We have successfully met the IRS nonprofit status, Board of Directors and bylaws, DHSS licensing requirements, approval for billing through Partners Behavioral Health, LME of our area, and the City and Health Department codes and certification for the rented location. Our Executive Director, Stephen Salvamutu, has now added a new, two new staff, and we are currently serving 15 members with referrals waiting. While our growth over the last several months have been steadily increasing, we are working toward a steady source of income to meet the growth, growing need for our services in Burke County. Licenses require us to have one staff per eight members. While this is reasonably, it creates a temporary cash flow issue until new members are active. The Clubhouse model is the gold standard in community-based mental health treatment of people living with a severe and persistent mental illness. It has provided, it has proven track record of being highly effective and cost-efficient, providing reduced hospitalization rates, easing the burden on EMS departments, stabilizing housing, increasing rates of permanent employment. It is life-changing. I hope you will agree that Brighter House is an essential resource for improving mental health outcomes and lives in Burke County. We need funding support and ask for your recommendations and suggestions. Please feel free to contact us if you would like any data or learn a bit more about this model that works so effectively. And the 4%, they, the Clubhouses represents the 4% of the most seriously mentally ill. That's schizophrenia, bipolar, PTSD, OCD, and manic depressive. And that little clip that you're going to see if you, after Kay sends it, that last one was when our son was manic depressive for a year. To watch, and we call it, I call him our beautiful mind, it, having a really severe mental illness is very difficult on families. And this actually, they get, members get to leave their diagnosis at the door, their family members know that they have a safe place to go to that understands their illnesses. So if you ever have any questions, and I would hope that y'all would go visit sometime because it's pretty close and things, thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. Appreciate the work that you all have been doing for this community.
Thank y'all. Y'all helped get us started, and we're not going away. And I won't come back to ask for more unless we need to get bigger.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Carla Kincaid.
Teammate, she's my teammate. From high school. Carla Kincaid, glad to see you guys. I got kind of confused on the days, just like Western P. Mark did last meeting. Didn't know that the days had changed. And of course, I missed Martin Luther King, and I missed Black History, and that was Women's History Month. But I had a book to share, but this was wrote by Martin Luther King's brother, and it kind of goes in today with some of the things that we're going through today. He was actually, the name of it is March On, the day my brother Martin changed the world. Of course, you know, a lot of those things are being revoked nowadays or trying. Not that it's legal, but it's going through like some of the other things. He said on that day that my brother and all these who marched in Washington taught us all about the power of words and how important it is to work together and raise our voices to speak up. It is a day that will last in the hearts and memories of all Americans, that beautiful quilt of people standing tall, taking a stand, and making a difference for you, for me, for us all. And that's just not, you know about the Civil Rights Act, we all know about it, we know it's being reversed as we speak. And in that last, that last sentence, for you, for me, and for us all, that include handicap, that include black and white. And eventually, we'll see it affect our families personally. We will. It doesn't matter who you voted for. I'm not a Republican, I'm not a Democrat. I'm in between, and if we could do away with that, we'd be a better world. But right now, we have an administration who is in the process of giving our country a new name. We're going to have a new name after a while, guys. We're going to have to say, what name should it be? Certainly not the United States of America, we're not united right now. We're divided. We're divided. And change over the pledge of our nation, undergone, indivisible, as well with our Constitution. I don't know that what we'll have coming down the pipe here is going to affect us all in Burke County, but I know it's on the way, and I know it's coming. It's not a legal thing, but it's a money thing. It's not legal, but if you don't do it, you won't get this. And just, you know, it takes me back. It takes me all the way back to the division that we had during Confederacy. And you know how I feel about Confederacy. So I just hope that we will be having talks in the future in reference to how this is going to affect this county, how we're going to come together as a county, as the city of Morganton, and explain to our residents what's going on, Republicans, Democrats, because it's going to affect us all, just like coronavirus did. So the Lord continues to speak. We know that he is the head of all and everything, and I hope we can remain within God we trust because in this time and this day, that's who we'll need to trust. I just look forward in the future with some kind of a town meeting, town hall, county, and some kind of executive hall meeting where we can see everybody to answer a lot of questions because I'm sure there'll be a lot of questions in the future for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Carla. Madam Clerk.
Kristy Guffin.
Thank you, Chairman Britton and Commissioners. In January, I committed to coming to talk to you monthly with just a tidbit of knowledge that I thought would help our community and our public health. So that's what I'm here to do again tonight. I am here to encourage you and other Burke County employers to consider joining the multi-district litigation against drug manufacturers and pharmacy benefits managers, or PBMs for short. I hope you got a chance to read the papers, article this weekend on pharmacy benefits managers. I thought they did an excellent job taking a very complex subject and making it easy to understand. Employers should strongly consider joining the multi-district litigation against Big Pharma due to these entities' harmful business practices and the burdens that has placed on employers, employees, families, and communities. This litigation targets alleged illegal collusion between drug manufacturers and PBMs in inflating prescription drug prices, manipulating the supply chain, and limiting access to affordable medications. And it provides an opportunity to shine a light on these dark practices and bring money back to our community. You may not be familiar with the term multi-district litigation. I was confused about it a little bit myself, but you probably know the outcome of multi-district litigation. The opioid settlements were an outcome of that type of litigation, so you're familiar with that. Like the opioid settlements, this multi-district litigation would infuse additional financial resources that we could use in our community at this time. Pardon me for making it sound like the lawsuit is already won, but the defendants in this case, again, the drug manufacturers and the PBMs, have already pled no contest in these criminal cases brought by the Department of Justice. So in the generics pricing conspiracy. So this makes civil cases against them easier. One of the primary reasons employers should join this litigation is the increasing cost of employee healthcare. Prescription drug expenses are a significant component of employer-sponsored health plans. The Kaiser Family Foundation says that it makes up nearly 25% of premium costs due, you know, just to prescriptions alone. As drug prices continue to rise, employers are often forced to pass these costs on to employees through higher premiums, copays deductibles, or reduced benefits. And some would say that employers are forced to pay higher premiums to insurance companies in lieu of higher salaries to hard-working employees. The actions of the drug manufacturers and PBMs, such as price fixing, kickbacks, arrangements, and the manipulation of formularies exacerbate this issue. By joining this litigation, employers not only take a stand against exploitative pricing practices, but also stand to recover those assets for their plans, health plans that were taken from them. We don't have enough time in this public comment for me to explain why that is the fiduciary duty of all plan sponsors to recover these plan assets that were taken illegitimately by criminal practices. So I'm happy to discuss that later at anyone's convenience. If anyone's interested, I'm holding a Zoom meeting with stakeholders and a multi-district litigation specialist tomorrow at 2:00 PM, and I'm happy to extend an invite to anyone who's interested. So thank you for letting me bring this information to you tonight.
Thank you, Kristy. Madam Clerk.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
All right, this brings us to item number nine, consent agenda, Mr. Manager. I'll ask you to review those items at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Several items for consideration. Item one is approval of name recognition, contribution of $5,000 for the new animal shelter specifically for the volunteer room. Item two is resolution from Burke County Public Schools approving approximately 10 acres, purchase price of $675,000 for the new East Elementary School. Item three is from our clerk. It's appointments and reappointments to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Those candidates are in your packet for review. Item four is following your February 14th work session, opioid work session, to fund for a three-year period at your direction, the opioid coordinator and the recovery coordinator. Item five is budget amendment number 10. This is $11,630, request a budget for lean training. That'll be in our Public Health Department, and this is a state grant, all-state grant, no match, from the State Department of Public Health. Item six is a proclamation-
time in this public comment for me to explain why that is the fiduciary duty of all plan sponsors to recover these plan assets that were taken illegitimately by criminal practices. So I'm happy to discuss, to discuss that later at anyone's convenience. If anyone's interested, I'm holding a Zoom meeting with stakeholders and a multi-district litigation specialist, um, tomorrow at 2:00 PM. And I'm happy to extend an invite to anyone who's interested. So thank you for letting me bring this information to you tonight.
Thank you, Kristi. Madam Clerk?
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
All right. This brings us to item number nine, consent agenda. Mr. Manager, I'll ask you to review those items at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Several items for consideration. Item one is approval of name recognition, contribution of $5,000 for the new animal shelter specifically for the volunteer room. Uh, item two is resolution from Burke County Public Schools approving a purchase of approximately 10 acres, purchase price of $675,000 for the new East Elementary School. Item three is from our clerk. It's, uh, appointments and reappointments to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Uh, those candidates are in your packet for review. Item four is following your February 14th work session, opioid work session, uh, to fund for a three-year period at your direction, the opioid coordinator and the recovery court coordinator. Item five is budget amendment number 10. This is $11,630. Request a budget for lean training. That'll be in our Public Health Department, and this is a, a state grant, all-state grant, no match, uh, from the State Department of Public Health. Item six is a proclamation, uh, proclaiming, uh, Social Worker Month for, uh, 2025, Social Worker Appreciation Month, excuse me. Item seven is presentation of the FY 2526 audit contract, that is with Thompson Price Scott Adams. Uh, the, the fee is unchanged at $49,500, which, uh, we feel is very, very advantageous for an organization of our size and complexity. Item eight is from our tax department. This is your February 2025 collection report. Item nine is your, also from the tax department, February 2025 release and refund report. And finally, for consideration, item 10 is from Western Piedmont Community College, and you were presented their Q2 financial data for the period ending December 31, 2024. Happy to answer questions you may have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Any questions, comments on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a few comments on a couple of these before we vote on them. In relation to item number two, purchase of real property, I am excited that, of course, our school system has the $42 million, I believe, from our lottery funds to be able to build a new school. And, and of course, this is to purchase some property. My concern and many other citizens' concerns are that we seem to hang on to excess property. So I hope that going forward, we'll look at like Chesterfield Elementary School that's still sitting there. There's going to be supposedly two schools shut down when this one's built. And I really hope we'll, we'll think about how to return those things to private hands so we can utilize those in the private market and, and gain some needed revenue from property tax and impossible business, uh, implementation for the county. Uh, the second thing, item number four, adoption, the opioid resolution. Um, this seems almost like a mirror of a couple of years ago when this process started with the funds. I did a little research. Um, you know, during our opioid meeting, I'd asked the presenters if they could tell us any counties that stood out for taking action. Uh, one of the commentators didn't really want to give an opinion, but Ms. A. Tony Young of Community Education Group commented that Wilkes County really stood out, uh, that they were taking a lot of action. And so that prompted me since then to go back and, and pull up, which is publicly listed on the opioid settlement website, each county's strategic plan, and how they're spending the money. And I just wanted to bring this out because I'm not on the opioid board going forward, and I'm sure we'll get reports back from that. And I am glad that it's going to be managed at the county level, uh, through our county manager. Um, but I would just like to point out a few things going forward, um, concerning this. Um, for instance, Burke County, in the past, we spent $300,000 on two, uh, strategic collaborative, two strategies is what it's called. Uh, and both of those were collaborative strategic planning. We spent, uh, one time $300,000 and another authorized, uh, 126,500 for a total of $426,500. And, and all of that was for str- strategic planning except for $10,000, uh, for the overdose drug. I don't know how you pronounce that, naloxone, sorry, um, which I'm sure was needed. Uh, and so my concern is that here we are again, uh, we're going to spend another, um, large amount of money. But I'd like to tell you some things that Wilkes County's doing and have done and implemented. And, and I'd really hope that we would consider, while we're working out through this process, that we would take action. So the things that I've seen that we've done so far is, is kind of planning to take action, uh, strategic planning. Um, Wilkes County, uh, they had two spending plans, but the really unique thing was they had 15 strategies within those plans. Um, and I'm just going to give you a few examples, and please bear with me. I'm sorry, but I feel like this is the only chance I have, uh, to express the citizens that have talked to me about they feel like we need to be moving because we have the money. Um, for instance, $545,000 in the first round, Wilkes Recovery Revolution, Mountain Health Solutions, Hospitality House. They spent $216,000 on evidence-based treatment, the Wilkes EMS, Mountain Health Solutions. They also did the naloxone dis- distribution. Uh, the another strategy was address the needs of criminal justice involved, and they provided support to other, um, resources in and outside of the county. Uh, another one was help educators to provide education regarding dangers of opioid misuse, and that was through their health department. Employment Related Services, $45,000 provide, provide a tech training program, and it gives in detail what they did. Their spending plan number two, uh, was another total of $1.9 million. Recovery Support Services was the first authorized strategy. Second, Addiction Treatment for Incarcerated Persons. Third, Evidence-Based Addiction Treatment. Fourth, Prevent Misuse of Opioids. And it gives a list of community partners that they're currently funding. So I, I looked through that list, and it made me a little sad, honestly, because I thought it seems like we're stuck in this pattern for over two years now of, of strategic planning. And I'm hoping now that this is going to move forward quickly. I really, and I believe it will. Uh, but I just wanted to point out, um, that in the past two years, many of you have been affected by opioid overdose. Some of you have, have lost friends and family. I certainly have. Um, but in the last two years, we responded to 1,200 overdose calls. In the last two years, we've had 94 overdose deaths. And, and my real concern is, did we, how many of those 94, if we have been working and spending money and helping fund some, some of the community partners that are already doing work in our community, maybe we could have prevented. There's no way to really know that. Um, I, I just hope that we don't get stuck in this proverbial churn of strategic planning. When we've got a, a, a sister county, I'll just call it, uh, Wilkes County, that these professional people who gave us a presentation said, yes, they're doing amazing things over there. And I see that they've implemented 15 in-county immediate action strategies. So I just wanted to comment that, and I hope that going forward, this new opioid board, um, will start implementing and partnering with local folks quickly to get folks services they need. And I, I would say that everybody should go look at what Wilkes County did. Um, those 15 strategies are very detailed. I just kind of highlighted them. It would take 20 minutes to go over them. I'm not going to do that, but, um, I hope we'll start taking action. And thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Barrier. Any other comments on the consent agenda? All right. Seeing here and now, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. All those in favor, signify the up in hand. It's five to zero, Madam Clerk. Gentlemen, we've got a number, uh, number of other items, six decision items. Are we good to go, or do we need a break? All right. Carrying on. First item and decision is comes from Finance. This will be a resolution to accept AIA grant presented by, um, our county manager, Mr. Effie. This is a somewhat of a new item, though we've, we've talked about it many, many times. It's not new to us, but, uh, the fact that we needed a resolution kind of came as a new idea. So, uh, Mr. Manager, tell us about it.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Both of these first two items for decision, and I'll cover them one at a time, but are, are items that the board is well aware of. Um, but a resolution is required to be compliance for, uh, to be compliant, um, as we work, uh, through, through preparing for audit and, and being, um, um, you know, appropriate with all the, uh, the documentation that we're required to have. So the first one, you're aware that we received a $500,000 direct appropriation from the North Carolina General Assembly through the Department of Environmental Quality to fund our water sewer AIA study. There was about $7,500 that was kept. That's supposed to be 92, not 29, um, at the top. $492,500 was, was sent to Burke County, uh, Department of Environmental Quality. The state kept a small administrative fee, um, of about 7,500 bucks, um, that would have, that would have summed up to the 500,000. Um, again, all of this is in motion. We've been working on our AIA study for well over a year. That was presented to you at your strategic planning, uh, work session by Chuck Willis and his team. Uh, this is just formalizing that resolution, uh, for the drawdown of that grant.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Gentlemen, you've had the resolution in front of you. I would entertain a motion to approve resolution number 202512.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adopt resolution number 2025-12.
Thank you, Commissioner Barry. All those in favor, signify the up in hand. Five to zero, Madam Clerk. Item number two, also from Finance, the resolution accepting ARPA grant for water wastewater infrastructure presented by Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This, this too is something we've talked about. We're currently working through a, a full water meter replacement, uh, project, um, for, for all of our meters, which is, again, funded through grant resources. Two, two grants make up that one. Uh, this is the larger of the two grants, and it is also from DEQ, uh, from a Clean Water Drinking Trust Fund, uh, Water Wastewater Infrastructure. It's $1,118,247. Um, again, we've already done the appropriation, the budget, you know, uh, amendments have been done appropriately. This is just approving a resolution in support of that, uh, water meter replacement project. Happy to answer any questions on that.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Any questions on this item? Mr. Manager, I, I believe this was the item, as I read this, that, uh, we kind of made some changes with the Indian Hills, uh, project.
Yes.
And you just refresh our memory, how, how are we going to reallocate things for Indian Hills?
So we believe Indian Hills will qualify for a FEMA public assistance hazard mitigation 404 project. Um, so, so this 1.1 was far short of the cost of elevating Indian Hills to begin with. So the reason that the county had had this grant for some time and it had not moved, similar to Commissioner Barry's, um, um, you know, point about opioid settlement dollars. So it was just sitting, and, and we asked the state to repurpose it for this water meter project because it was about a third of the cost of Indian Hills pump station, and, and certainly not trying to, to, to communicate that we're going to capitalize from the tragedy that was Hurricane Alene. But because of the hurricane, there is FEMA 404 dollars that can be used for mitigation, preparation to, in, in future disasters. And literally what that would do was just elevate that pump station that we know sits down below elevation and is prone to flooding. Um, so, so, you know, two things. One would be, um, there wasn't enough money in this grant to do Indian Hills. So reusing it for water meters is a, is a critical need. Um, but secondly, um, we believe that Indian Hills will be a mitigation target, and we begin that process this coming Friday.
Any, uh, other question on this item? Here and now, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adopt resolution number 2025-13.
Thank you, Mr. Stroud. All those in favor, signify the up in hand. Five to zero. Item number three, also coming from the county manager, resolution, personal property tax audit policy. Mr. Manager?
And, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, permission of board, I have all of these lumped together as one conversation, presentation piece. You, um, the board can certainly take independent action, but with your permission, I'll cover all three of them at the same time.
That's good.
Again, we talked about this at, um, uh, pre-agenda briefly, but the idea is, uh, this idea of, of, of trying to get better, excuse me, to be more formalized, to be more programmed, and all things that we do, tax administration is certainly a big part of that. Um, and, and all the things, the things, generally what I want to talk about today is everything that we do and the concept of tax administration is governed through the North Carolina Machinery Act. Um, I'd also want to point out the different components of the county's tax base. And then I, we've proposed some policies that I, I suppose, um, create some more, um, uniform, um, strategy and standard operating procedure for how we handle, um, those different components of the tax base, specifically personal, business personal property, uh, present use value, uh, items and tax foreclosures. Uh, then I'll certainly be happy to answer any questions. Um, so 105 is the general statute that governs taxation. I know that we've talked about this many times. Um, in North Carolina, we, we are required by statute as political subdivisions of the state, uh, to, to adopt and use the ad valorem taxing methodology, which is, I believe, Latin for based on value. So that's not something this board has discretion over. Um, I, I know that we've all talked about that in principle, that that may not be the most, um, uh, defendable methodology of the more value of the things you, you own, the more you pay in taxes. Uh, but that's what counties in North Carolina are required to do in this statute is what governs how that may be done. And it's handled the exact same way in all 100 counties. We, we tax the same way, um, similar with municipalities as well. When you look at the county's total tax base, it's about $10.8 billion currently. Excuse me. It's important, I think, to, to, to differentiate between the, the components. So real property, uh, it's about 8.6 billion, roughly. That's buildings and land, so structures and land. Um, personal property, if you think about the building, if you took it up and, and turned it upside down and shook it, anything that falls out generally would be personal property. So think about furniture and equipment. We also have state boards that get lumped into there, and those are, um, kind of regulated industries, like, like, like a utility, you know, a provider that has a, is overseen at a state level by a commission. And then you have motor vehicles. That's about 10% of our total, total value. Um, so I wanted to start with business personal property, again, about $1.2 billion, uh, in Burke County. Um, and, and, you know, I talked about machinery and equipment, the things that would be tangible assets that aren't land or aren't structure, pretty much everything else that falls into there. A big component is construction in progress. Um, and I didn't point that out when, when we met last time, um, but it, but it, it, it occurred to me that when, um, so we talked about one of our, one of our newest economic development successes, which is Eunice. And, uh, their, their value heading into our 2526 budget is about $3 million, even though, uh, certainly the asset that's constructed out there has a, a value far higher than that. But when real property is not fully complete, that CIP component, uh, goes into, goes into personal property. And, and, and I think that's, that's important. So each year, um, businesses have the opportunity to list personal property, unlike motor vehicle where there's a tag, unlike real property where there's a deed, we really, or a building permit that goes into the construction, we don't really have a way to monitor and collect that information. So it's up to the taxpayer to list that. And they list it at cost of acquisition or cost of, of, of obtaining. And then we apply depreciation schedules to that asset year over year based on approved depreciation schedules from the North Carolina Department of Revenue. And all of that is statutory. So the challenge is sometimes taxpayers, um, business owners, uh, may not know how to properly list, or they may not know when it's time to list, and we end up with these inaccurate records. We also have situations where people have an asset that they're being taxed on that they've disposed of, and we have no way of knowing. So I always like to use the example of a, of a, of a grading company. They have really expensive assets, bulldozers and trackos and those things that cost hundreds of thousands of dollars. They don't have a tag on them. They're not real property. And we only know about acquisition when that person, that company lists them. But on the flip side, if they use it and dispose of it, we also don't know that. So if these listings aren't being updated regularly, I think it, I think it, it is challenging to have accurate taxation, which is our only goal. We, we want to make sure that we're following state law, following the Machinery Act. Um, and that's what this policy of, of more, um, formalized review is, is hoping to accomplish. So the policy would require the tax administrator and the tax office, uh, to use a third-party review consultant, um, to look at, and what we propose is all of the business personal property accounts, um, that have a value of more than $50,000. And there's certainly a return on investment component of that because we have to pay a fixed fee of $625 per review to the, to the, to the inspection agency. Uh, Mr. Chairman, you asked last time how many that would be. We've proposed every eight years. There's about 875 business personal property accounts that have a value of more than $50,000 per business personal property. So that means we would have to review about 109 annually. Now, for context, the average value of those 875 is $900,000. So 50 is below, but the average is 900,000. So there's some fairly large, um, machinery and equipment type accounts, but a lot of CIP in that, in those values as well for, for companies that are expanding and relocating. For those accounts that are less than $50,000, that's about 3,900 of those, um, average value much less, $9,700. We've proposed, and in your original policy, it was 5%, which I'm glad that you challenged the quantity of those annual reviews. We've changed that to 1% just to make that a more obtainable and achievable goal. That would put about another 40 reviews per year. Um, we also had that if there's, if there's, at the assessor's discretion, if there's something that a taxpayer's not being responsive, or there's some type of outlier, there's always that ability to, to, to work with that taxpayer individually. Uh, but generally, again, just trying to remove, right now, we have an agreement. We spend, um, we, we ask our, our folks to look at about between 15 and 20 a year. There's no methodology to who and how that is. There's no uniformity to it's every X amount of time or every X, you know, certain type of industry. It's highly discretionary, and it's usually based on there's been no listings or no change to your business personal property in a decade, so we want to take a look. And, and, um, I, I just think that we can be a little bit more consistent with our application process by formalizing, you know, policy. Would you like me to keep moving or talk? So the second policy for consideration- So, the second policy for consideration is on present use value. Present use values, we talked about, is really a tax deferment system. Again, this is all driven by statute, and actually, there's a component through NC State with a state cooperative extension that drafts a use of value, a schedule of values, that, so it's not even a, what is the value per acre for a piece of property that's in forestry or in horticulture? That's not a value that's assigned locally. There's a, you know, I call it an encyclopedia, if you will, the scheduled values, statistical values that are approved at a state level by a separate governing commission that's then applied across the state by region. But generally, you have to have property that's in active production, minimum acreage, and meet the requirements here that are set out to meet that. Again, I mentioned horticulture, and you can see the requirements, agriculture and forestry. Each of them have their own triggers that allows someone to be in active use. Important to say, when someone is in active present use and that property changes hands, or if there was a review and they weren't compliant, the previous three-year taxes are then due immediately at full freight. So, if I have a piece of property that's in active forestry and I sell it, and that the new owner does not reapply and is unapproved, then there's three years of back taxes that are owed before that deed transition can happen. So, what we've proposed, and this is largely in alignment with the statutory requirement, it could be, the statute requires every eight years, we don't have a high volume, we have large tracks, but we don't have a high volume of present use, so what we've proposed is every four, and that aligns with your revaluation cycle. That's the only connection there. Statutory, we have to do it every eight years, every property that's in one of those present use, we have to do it every eight years, so that could be the direction of the board. We propose four, just because, again, our goals to be as accurate as we can, and that more closely aligns with revaluation. Questions on that? And this is certainly the more complicated one, but trying to standardize our process for review before something goes into foreclosure. So, we have lots of collection efforts, and what we've proposed here is kind of an escalated ladder. So, after, you know, taxes are due and late, we would propose that the first action being bank and wage garnishment, which is commonly used now, but we're trying to assign a specific kind of time period to that. If that is, if that is not an effective use, after 90 days, we can move into a more authoritative type billing, like debt set off, which is a state database. Obviously, in all of those things, and if you look in the policy, we're writing both pre-foreclosure notices as well as final warnings to the property owner and giving them at least 20 days. So, the major changes between where we are now and moving forward is before anything was ever sent to the attorney, and as you all know, the county contracts for, you know, legal services for tax foreclosures, was Kanye Law Firm in Asheville, they represent about 15 counties across North Carolina, big counties like Mecklenburg and small counties like to the far west of us, and kind of everything in between, and I think that they do a good job once it's turned over to them. But at the, they, the accounts that they would work are requested by the client, meaning we send those cases, those files to them. And again, at a staff level, trying to remove discretion and have consistent policy, and again, what I think would be different here is we're setting a minimum threshold of anything less than $500 we would not send, and anything that hasn't been outstanding for at least 12 months, we would not send. Doesn't mean that we wouldn't try to collect, we would still, for all of those accounts, we would still do wage garnishment, debt set off. We can attach liens, so, you know, think if somebody has a small overdue tax and we move through the process, you can attach a lien to that, and if this property's ever sold, the county can collect at that point. But ultimately, I think the goal is to just, again, be more consistent, more uniform, and not create pretty substantial legal expenses at times for fairly smaller, less material tax bills. And again, it would not necessarily change our local collection efforts, it would just be scheduled and predictable and give staff direction so that we can act consistently. Those are the policies that we're asking you all to consider, and certainly, any modifications you want to, you would like to make, we're happy to accommodate.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Gentlemen, we discussed these in detail during our pre-agenda, and you've heard more information tonight. We'll consider these, all three, unless there's any specific questions at this time. Seeing here and now, I'll entertain a motion to adopt these three separate resolutions, and...
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2025-08, Resolution Number 2025-07, and Resolution Number 2025-09.
Thank you, Commissioner Burns. All those in favor signify the uplift of the hand. And that's five to zero, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Brings us to the item we added, item number six. This will come from our sheriff and from county attorney, and I'm going to ask the sheriff to come forward first, and this is Resolution Authorizing Litigation and Settlement presented by, of course, sheriff and the attorney, and Sheriff, if you don't mind, just give us a little background on this particular case, and then, Mr. Hall, if you'll tell us a little bit more about the resolution when we get there.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
So, this is a piece of property located at 1937 Highway 64, and if you travel Highway 64 out of Morganton towards Rutherford County, when you pass the Honda Place, it's a residence located atop of the hill to the left, and we have had numerous, numerous calls for service out there, to include overdoses, wanted people, disturbances, one overdose death, 20 calls for service over the past three years, and we get complaints about this location constantly. They, people call me about this location with, in that neighborhood, just people walking around their property. One lady said that she turned her Porsche light on one night, and there was a guy just standing, obviously under the influence of some apparent stubs in the garage, didn't know who he was. When he left walking, he went towards this particular location. Back in the first of February, the Narcotics Union gathered enough probable calls to get a search warrant issued. We went out there with our SWAT team and hit this house. We pulled over 20 people out of this location, and different buildings, and, you know, really, it looked like a clam car, they kept bringing people out of that house. And, you know, it is funny in a way, but it really wasn't. All those people were just not in good shape. We think there's a lot of narcotics use there, of course, we've had the overdoses and the overdose deaths, so I think that that supports that. This particular location has become a nuisance in that neighborhood with criminal activity. We asked ALE to come in and help us, they have a nuisance abatement team, and that investigation moved very quickly to where we believe that we had enough to ask our county attorney to assistance and assist us in this nuisance abatement.
Okay, thank you, Sheriff. Gentlemen, any questions for the sheriff on the details of the location before Mr. Hall talks to us about the resolution? All right, Mr. Hall, if you'll tell us a little bit about this resolution and what to expect.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, members, the resolution just simply lets the county attorney, which is our firm, of course, file suit on behalf of the county in order to abate the nuisance, and you heard the reasons from the sheriff for why both sheriff's office and ALE want to abate that nuisance because of the numerous calls that they've had. ALE, I think along with sheriff's office, my office have been in some contact with the property owner, and the hope is, is that this is going to be a suit that gets filed and the property owner agrees to the entry of an order that requires them to take certain remedial measures, requires them to get folks off the property, keep people off the property, allows the sheriff's office to essentially arrest anybody for trespassing who shows up out there, and it depends on how it's ultimately resolved as to whether the property owner can go back himself, or maybe he has to transfer title to the property, or he may end up being required to sell the property by contracting with a real estate agent and selling it at some reasonable price. So, the resolution is for the purpose of you all allowing us to file that suit because there's some legal authority in North Carolina that a local government needs to give some explicit acknowledgement or permission to its attorney in order to file suit on its behalf. So, that's what this is before you today, and because it would be litigation, glad to answer questions you may have, I would suggest some of the questions you may want to ask are probably better suited for closed session, simply because this will be litigation, just a question of whether we're going to have to actually litigate it, or whether we're going to have to, whether we're going to be able to settle it fairly soon. But we've worked with ALE quite a bit on it as well, they tell me they'll even pay the filing fee at the courthouse, which I didn't know they did that. I'm not, I didn't know that was a thing, so, not sure it is, but we'll take it. But in any event, I'd ask you to approve the resolution.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hall. Any questions for Mr. Hall on this item?
One quick question. If this would go as far as seizure, would that fall into the fines and forfeitures clause for our school system, or how, where would the proceeds from that go?
It's a lien on the property, so all the expenses that the board may have will be a lien on the property. But now, the property itself, it's taken, reversed to the Board of Education. But if, without getting into too much, and I probably want to reserve a closed session just because of purposes, you know, you never know what happens in a lawsuit, and I don't want to show off our cards, you know, in open session. I doubt seriously the folks out at this property are watching the board commissioners meeting tonight, but could be wrong, but just out of abundance of caution, to get more down to weeds, my advice would be that we talk about that in closed session.
Other questions? All right, gentlemen, seeing here and now, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, with enthusiasm, I make a motion, we adopt Resolution Number 2025-14.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. All those in favor signify the uplift of the hand. Five to zero, Madam Clerk. All right, this brings us to item number 11, Elections Departmental Update presented by Kenny. Kenny, you have endured, and finally, it is your turn. Thank you for being here.
Good evening. I hope you're all doing good. This is a departmental update for the Board of Elections here in Burke County. The Board of Elections Office is located at the Higher Education, Foothills Higher Education Facility on South Sterling Street to 2128 South Sterling Street, Suite 100. Our current board is made up of Chair L. H. Kirksey, Secretary Sandy Walker, Lynda Walker, board member, Anthony Iveno, board member, and Beverly Cawton, board member. The Board of Elections here in Burke County meets every second Tuesday of the month at the Board of Elections Office. This is, Burke County does meet all 12 months. A lot of the counties in the surrounding area meet only during election times, but our county meets every second Tuesday. Get in contact with the Board of Election member, their email is burke.boe@burkenc.org. The staff at the Board of Election Office is myself as director, Deputy Director Dustin Wise, Election Specialist 1 Amy Moore, Election Specialist 3 Trent Price. We also have three part-time office staff that comes in only when needed, like during election time, if we go to a conference out of town or something, or district meetings, someone will come in, stay in the office. We have about three people because sometimes one or the other one can't stay there. So, also, election workers. This past election season, we did 40 early poll workers for early voting, we had 161 Election Day poll workers, which included 41 first-time poll workers, and we also had four high school students this time. First time in about, maybe about 10 years that we've had high school students, which this is really a good look to, we've got a base to grow on for poll workers. We operate five early voting sites in most midterm elections and general election presidential years. There are Glen Alpine Town Hall, Morganton Senior Center, the Board of Election Office on South Sterling, the Rutherford College Town Hall, and the Hildrebrand Library/Senior Center. Election Day precincts, we have 31 reaching all the way from Jonas Ridge to Icarus 5, which is Longview Rec Center, all the way down to Lower Fork, which is South Mountain Fire Department, out 64 to Pilot Mountain, the Rock Church, all the way up to Limbo 1, which is Longtown Fire Department. We also, for the 2024 election season, for the presidential election, Burke County voted 46,000 voters out of, out of, sorry. We voted 46,000 here in Burke County out of 60,596 registered voters, which was a 75.91% turnout. The state average was 5.7 million roughly, out of 7.7 million, was 73.73% turnout, so Burke County averaged a little bit 2% better than statewide. Voter affiliation in Burke County right now is, the top registered party is the Republican Party with 24,631, unaffiliated is next with 22,376. The Democrat Party has 11,655, Libertarian is 343, No Labels 121, Green Party with 6, We the People Party with 7, and the Justice for All Party with 8. When we're having election cycles in Burke County, it's not just the election department that throws in and helps out, we also have the assistance of the General Services of loading our equipment, delivering our equipment. This is from this past presidential election, the trailers that the county purchased about two or three years ago to help for a cost of delivering equipment, they come and load them up. Also, the IT department comes and sets up the computers and our laptops and printers at each polling precinct. For the first time in Burke County history, after the election cycle we just went through from the primary all the way to the election, and all these people working in long hours, early voting was some days 13 hours, and election days normally like somewhere around 14, 15 hours, we decided to do a poll worker appreciation dinner. Approximately about 90 people, those showed up. This was no cost to the county, we asked for donations from local restaurants to sponsor food or stuff like that, we had tea donated, food, this was attended, like I said, by 90 people. Everybody was thrilled, they really enjoyed it, and they really felt appreciated from Burke County. Voter registration, to register to vote in Burke County or anywhere in North Carolina, you can come by the board's office, or you can log on to the computer, to the DMV, or the state board, excuse me, the state board website, or our local Burke County website, you can click on the link that'll take you there. Also, voter ID, November the 24th was the fourth, or 2024 was the fourth election with new voter ID rules in place. The Board of Election Office this past year registered IDs so far for 131 IDs was issued in 2024. A photo ID is required to vote in North Carolina now, if you do not have a license, you do not have identification like that, you can come to, you have to already be registered, but you can come to our office and we can make you a card that is good for only voting There are 59,183 registered voters in Burke County as of February the 1st, 2025. In January of this year, we've sent out an NCOA, which it was a confirmation mail and not an NCOA, we did that today, was sent out, which was 4,994 voter registration cards, and what we're doing is we're trying to find out if people have moved out of the county, if they're still here, have they changed their address? We've mailed something out to them in the past year, two years, they've not sent nothing back to us, so we're trying to locate them to find out, so we can update our roles. We also do weekly list maintenance, that includes removal of ineligible voters due to death, family convictions, the MBRA survey reports, duplicate registrations and out-of-state cancellations to ensure that we have accurate voter records, voter rolls. Burke County Board Staff will also attend the North Carolina Association of Directors of Elections Conference in Durham next week, that's a conference that we go to once every two years. 2025 Municipal Candidate Filing, for this year will begin July the 7th at 8:00 a.m. to July the 18th till 12:00 p.m. Municipalities filing will be Conley Springs, Drexel, Glen Alpine, Hickory, Longview, Morganton, Rhodes, and Baudes. Election Day for this will be November the 4th, 2025, and that's the only elections we have. And that's the only elections we have unless the city of Hickory registers at least three people for mayor or three people in Ward 5, which encompasses part of Burke County. If that would happen, we'll have to have a primary in October. Looking ahead to 2026, candidate filing for the March 2026 primary is going to be December the 1st of this year through December the 19th. Primary election day will be March the 3rd of 2026. The general election day will be November the 3rd of 2026 next year. If we would happen to have a second primary, that will be held in May. This is our fiscal, fiscal budget for 2024, 2025, roughly around $564,000. When you break that down into citizens in this county, it's $6.39 per citizen or $9.54 per registered voter. Compare that with the local counties that surround us, the budget per vote registered voter ranges from 1541 down to 778. 1541 goes to McDowell County and the lowest would be Rutherford County, which is 778 per registered voter. So Burke County at $9.54, seeing it, is pretty much right in, close to the middle, a little bit lower than middle compared to our other counties. Can I, y'all, anybody have any questions?
All right, thank you, Kenny. We appreciate that report and I know I can speak on behalf of the board that often we take for granted all that goes into our elections, but I think you made it pretty clear tonight what it takes to get all that done and we certainly appreciate all the work that you guys do and, and as you've noted, all the volunteers and, and folks that helped to come in just, just for the polling sites and precincts and it's quite an orchestration, you do a great job at it and we certainly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments for Kenny? All right, here none, motion to accept this report, please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the report as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. All those in favor signify by the uplifted hand. Five to zero. All right, this brings us to reports and comments tonight. I'll open the floor to receive reports and comments at this time and I'll start way down there with Ms. Margaret.
No comments, thank you.
All right, Mr. Attorney. Nothing for me. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm very pleased to report that Commissioner Barrier has completed his two clock hours of ethics training as required by NC general statutes and that I have been recertified as a North Carolina Master County Clerk for the next three years.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Manager.
Well, I can't top that one, but, but I, I'm pleased to report we, the posting for the opioid coordinator closed on Friday, so we're, we, we had a really deep applicant pool, excited to see that process moving forward. We met with Partners Behavioral Health this morning to talk, the, the capital grant allocation that you all talked about at your opioid work session, looks like it's going to be available on July 1st. The state, that's as quickly as they'll get it in partners' hands, but, but we have a timeline so we can go ahead and begin those planning processes. The industrial shell building RFQ for design and engineering also closed Friday, so we've, we've had those proposals over the weekend and are eager to, to get back together as a selection committee early this week to, to start moving that forward. So a lot of, a lot of really good, positive things happening and just probably a small part of it.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mr. Scrabble.
I just want to say how good you guys looking green. I didn't get nothing but socks, so I love you guys.
Thanks, sir.
I just want to say how touched I was that we had all of our EMS personnel up here tonight that were recognized and having spent some time in that world years ago, I, I want to say a personal thank you to you guys, your staff, and particularly their families. People have no idea what they go through and what the families go through and the, the stories that they sometime must endure when their loved one comes home from a shift. And I just want to say thank you for that. Commissioner Barrier had mentioned Chesterfield earlier. I wanted to kind of clear up something on that. The Board of Education did surplus that property and they offered it to the county for first right of refusal and we didn't take it. So it's in the hands of the Board of Education to market and get that property sold and back on the tax rolls. In the past, we've also, there's 28 acres of land in Icar that had been purchased some years ago for the possibility of a new elementary school. They were encouraged when they came to present to us a, a previous piece of property that they were looking at, they were encouraged to get that back on the tax rolls as well. I don't know that they've declared that surplus yet, but that's certain, I think that we should certainly ask them.
All right, thank you, Mr. Burns. Mr. Vice Chair.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just say that a, a meeting like tonight makes me really proud when I leave here to see people like that come up here, the emergency personnel and the boy scouts and just the things that make America in this county great. And I'm very appreciative of all you do and happy St. Patrick's Day for all you Irishmen out there.
All right, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Mr. Barrier.
Yeah, I'll reiterate, Commissioner Burns, for our EMS folks and police, fire department, what an amazing job and a great group of people we have and we're just so appreciative of that. And, and I'm grateful to be on this board with such a diverse group of thinkers and, and I know ultimately we want our county to be the best that it can be and, and I appreciate all the citizen input. So if you're out there on YouTube land or Facebook, I appreciate all those comments, keep them coming so we can all be better together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrier. Let me make just a few reminders tonight. I don't have any other items to, to bring before you. April the 7th, Board of Commissioners pre-agenda meeting at 3:00 p.m. April 18th, county offices will be closed in observance of Good Friday and the convenience sites and landfill will operate on normal hours. April 21st, Board of Commissioners regular meeting at 6:00 p.m. And let me encourage again, the groups who might be interested in leading the pledge of allegiance here at our meeting, we were very glad to have scouts with us tonight and we'd love to have others coming forward to help lead in our pledge and open our meetings each month. And that'll bring us to vacancy announcements. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen of the audience. We have the following opportunities for citizens to be engaged in county boards and committees: the Adult Care and Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee, Burke County Public Health Advisory Board, Hickory Regional Planning Commission, Drexel Planning Board ETJ Alternate, Burke County Planning Board, Partners Health Management's Human Rights Committee, and the Volunteer Agriculture Board.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And as you can see, there are lots of possibilities for folks to help on a number of committees and boards, so if you are able to do that and would be interested, please contact our clerk and she can help you get in touch with us for that. This brings us to item 13, closed session. We do have need for a closed session tonight and so at this time, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss threatened or pending litigation, to preserve the attorney-client privilege, to discuss economic development matters, to discuss contractual matters, land acquisition, and to discuss personnel matters as authorized by NCGS 143318 dot 11, A345 and 6. Can I have a motion?
So move.
All those in favor signify by the uplifted hand. That is all of us. Gentlemen, I'm going to give you five minutes, then we're going to begin closed session. Ladies and gentlemen, I'll announce that we had a proper motion in closed session to come out of closed session and that no action was taken in closed session. And since it is St. Patrick's Day, may the road rise up to meet you, may the wind be always at your back, may the sun shine warm upon your face and rains fall soft upon your fields. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Go for it, Mr. Vice Chairman.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. All in favor signify by the uplifted hand. Madam Clerk, five to zero.
All right. I can see Phil. He was...
Y'all go to long one.